Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the meeting of the Carver Zoning Board of Appeals for the date of October 27, 2020. It's now 7:01 or 7:02, depending upon how fast or slow your watch might be. We are in Meeting Room 1 and practicing social distancing as much as we can in this modest-sized room. The first order of business tonight is the approval of the meeting minutes from September 29, 2020. And I do want to pass this out to the board members. These are the meeting minutes, which I think you'd have all reviewed with one change. There is one change on here that I made at the request of Member Jermaine for the sake of factual accuracy. Otherwise, these meeting minutes are exactly the same as those that were sent to the board members a while ago for their review in advance of this meeting tonight. So I ask if anybody has any questions, any amendments, changes, or modifications they'd like to make at this time.
Yeah, the change isn't in here, Mr. Chairman.
Change not in that copy?
I have the 29th here.
September 29th, we have two copies?
Yes.
Good.
I have three copies.
You find it?
Did.
Good. Anyone else have anything? Do I hear a motion?
Motion, so moved.
Accept the minutes of this version of the minutes, which I just passed out without one small but important factual change.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so those meeting minutes are accepted.
I'm abstaining. I abstain.
Next thing on our list tonight is reorganization, which we have had to put off on a couple of occasions because of board members who were unable to make it. So we need to talk about chair, vice chair for this next yearly cycle. Jermaine, Ms. Mueller, Ms. Moniz, Ms. Clark, Mr. Karley. Questions, comments, suggestions? By the way, I'm perfectly happy to give this.
I nominate Stephen Gray for chairman.
Second.
So that worked.
Do I have a choice?
Yeah, you can say no, and then we can nominate you a second time.
Ms. Clark, do you want to take a second? Ask for a second?
Another second? There were like three.
Mr. Karley, did you get who the first one was?
It was Sharon and then Alan.
And Eric. I mean, you can put us all in here, thirds, fourths.
Ms. Clark, could you ask for a vote?
All in favor of Stephen Gray remaining as chairman, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye. No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding.
So I've abstained, Mr. Karley, so the vote is four to zero. Actually, five to zero. You voted on that one. By the way, for anybody who may be watching at home and for those of you who are here tonight, I do want to welcome to the board this evening for our next order of business, Kelly DeCarley, who has been taking our notes for the last few months and learning as she goes. And she has now been appointed one of the alternates to this board. So she has got a running start, and we appreciate her sense of civic duty and hope that she will stay with us for quite some time. Happy to have her.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
All right.
Steve.
We're doing a vice chairman?
We're going to do vice chair?
Oh, vice chair, yes. Do I hear a nomination for vice chair?
I'd like to nominate Sharon Clark for vice chair.
So close.
I'll second that.
There you go.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That vote is five to zero.
Well, technically.
This is easy now. We don't have to change the website titles and stuff like that.
So the next order of business is what we usually do as a board, and that's to go over our cases. We have four of them tonight, which is quite a lot for us because there are a lot of technical issues that we have to work through for each of these cases. The first one is a continued case, public hearing case number 1-108R. The petitioner being Matthew Gramaras, seeking a special permit pursuant to sections 2245 C, 5221, and 5300, and its following sections of the Carver zoning bylaw for property located at 7 Atwood Street in Carver, assessors map lot 1-108R, to construct a 1,200 square foot barn when the maximum allowed is only 600 square feet in a residential agricultural district. Now, when I sat down here tonight, I saw that an email had been sent by the petitioner at 4:59 PM today. And for the record, I'm going to read it to all of us, both board members and members of the public who might be here. It says, "I want to thank you for your help along with the ZBA's time. At this time, I wish to withdraw my ZBA case for 7 Atwood Street without prejudice. Should you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. Regards, Matt Gramaras." Short sweep, a request for a dismissal without prejudice. Now, what that means, for those of you who don't know, is that when a case is dismissed without prejudice, it means that they can bring it back at some indefinite point in time in the future, as opposed to a case being dismissed with prejudice, which means they can't break it back. So he's asking for dismissal without prejudice. I do want to say for the record that in the interim, we had done a site walk at his property, had viewed where he wanted to place the barn, and we also had received an email from his direct budding neighbor who indicated opposition to the proposed construction. So that email is part of the board file at this time, both emails, as a matter of fact. So I ask the board for a motion as to how it wants to proceed with regard to this case.
I make a motion, we grant the request.
Second?
And I think, Fran, you were not on this one. The four of us were, however. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so this case is dismissed without prejudice. Kelly, you voted on that one, too. So that's actually five to zero because Ms. Moniz was not present when this public hearing was opened.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
While Kelly was taking the minutes from that particular meeting, she was not a member of the board at that point.
That's true.
So I don't think that her vote would be valid.
Right, so let's do that four to zero.
Sorry, Kelly.
Your point's well taken.
Huh? Sorry, Kelly.
Oh, no, I don't think so.
You get to vote on the board reorganization.
I do. I got one vote in.
First vote.
Two.
All right. The next case is also a continued case, case number 9-0-R, the petitioner being Donald J. Correa, as trustee of 12 Pond Way Realty Trust, seeking variances pursuant to section 2320 or a special permit pursuant to sections 2253, 21, and 5300, and sections following of the Carver zoning bylaw for property located at 12 Pond View Way in Carver, assessors map 9-lot-0-R, due to the fact that the applicant is moving the location of the single-family house footprint in a residential agricultural district. Now, by way of background, this board has received extensive submissions from the petitioner since this case last came before us, which I have dutifully passed on to the board members so they could read them in advance. But I also received late this afternoon yet another memorandum, a supplemental memorandum from the petitioner, which I know none of the board members have seen in just a little while ago. So the first thing I want to do is ask the board members who are voting on this case whether they feel as if they need more time to review these submissions, or whether they are prepared to proceed this evening.
Where's the second one? Is it? Oh.
You have it anywhere?
No, this is the first one. Let me make sure I have it up.
Does anyone, maybe she have any feelings about whether they have enough time to present and edit out, or do they feel prepared enough to proceed on the merits this evening? Mueller indicates that he's okay.
I'm not happy about this.
Ms. Clark, are you prepared to go forward at this time? And Mr. Jermaine?
Yeah, I am, but obviously, we're going to have to have a discussion.
Ms. Clark, are you prepared to go forward at this time? If any one board member is not prepared, we're not going to do this. That's my feeling.
Why is this being received so late?
It was sent to my office at 3 o'clock this afternoon, and because I was in conferences, I did not get to see it until after 5 o'clock today.
I wasn't talking to you.
Thank you. Just for the record.
I was asking, I was asking the applicant. We have one very involved memo that we received on the 23rd, which I think everybody had a chance to read, but not necessarily vet. And another one today at, well, we're getting it at 7:15, and it was sent this afternoon. I don't like to receive these memos the day of because I do my homework, I do a lot of reading. Mr. Correa, are we bothering you?
I'm sorry.
Put your phone away. I'm asking you, why is this received so late?
Well, only because subsequent to submitting the first memo, which did take a bit of time and effort of research and so forth, my assistant who's with me tonight, Megan King, did find a couple of other cases that supported the variance application, and so they were just added on to. It didn't create any new issues, per se. There's just a couple of additional cases of authority.
Is there a question about the lot, actual lot lines?
Yeah, that's if we get into the merits. I want to give Ms. Clark the opportunity to make a decision about whether she's comfortable moving forward tonight in view of these late submissions. This is a very technical case, ladies and gentlemen, with a lot of technical legal issues, more so, I think, than the normal case that we come across. And we're certainly prepared to deal with all those issues, but we want to make sure that everybody is prepared. So how would you like to proceed, Ms. Clark?
What I'd like to do, I think, since, can I first ask if there's anyone in the public here to speak on this case? Any hands? Is there anyone on? Okay. Because I don't want to put them out. I feel we can hear a presentation, but I don't feel that I would vote. So you can proceed on it, whichever way you want.
Okay, well, let's start and see where we end up with this. How's that sound?
Okay.
Okay, gentlemen, to my left? Yes?
Yep.
All right, Mr. Correa, you have the floor for a short period, and then we're going to kind of kick some things around up here.
Subsequent to the last meeting, a few things occurred from our perspective because of the issues that were raised in the last meeting and some of the commentary that was discussed. I did go back and I reviewed the YouTube videos of the two ConCon hearings, and I also reviewed this last meeting, this 29, before this board. And thereafter, because of the technical issues, as the chairman indicated, we researched the issue, what I hoped was thoroughly. And so the first part of the memo merely recites kind of the history of how we got here. And in particular, I went back to Joe Webby, as the chair had asked last time, and I asked Joe to go back to the plan that he had prepared and to superimpose on that plan the existing structure with dimensional setbacks on it, which he's done. And I memorialized that in my memo, and also to reproduce the proposed structure, which the original plan in that respect hadn't changed. Because I think that was very relevant to a full understanding of the law that surrounds a case like this. At the last meeting, and by the way, I'm going to split my presentation, my assistant will take the variance part, and my presentation will be centered on the special permit part. At the last time we were here, the chairman talked about the August 2020 appeals court case of Comstock versus Gloucester, and we went back and read that more than once, actually. And that's part of the presentation this evening. The Gloucester case liberalizes the requirements that a board of appeals is able to utilize in terms of granting a special permit. And so it's my request tonight that the board rule on both the special permit application as well as the variance application. A careful reading of the Gloucester case, which quotes another recent case, the Balada versus Brookline case, in it, addresses the very issue of whether or not a board of appeals could grant a special permit in a non-conforming application. And in the Gloucester case, it was an old dilapidated garage. The garage was an eyesore to the neighborhood. The garage did not meet current standards for conformity as far as the sideline setback, front, the current side and front, yeah, setback requirements were non-conforming of the existing garage. The application went through the Gloucester board of ZBA, and they recognized that it was a pre-existing non-conforming structure. They also requested an expansion, and here's why the case is different than Balada, they requested an expansion of the non-conformity, and that expansion was heightened. And the ZBA treated the application as requiring variances, and the property owner appealed through the process and ends up in the Mass Appeals Court. And the Mass Appeals Court determined that even where the proposed changes expand the non-conformity, this would be available under special permit, variance would not require. And they quoted the Balada case, another case, interestingly enough, another case in Gloucester, the Gale case, all of which I put into my memo. And so the Gloucester Appeals Court stated, and I quoted in paragraph 13 of my memo, that as a matter of law, no variances from the setback requirements were required. Now, one of the issues that underlies the whole thing is the 48, section six, section that grandfather's a lot that's 5,000 square feet, 50 feet of frontage minimum. And that statute says that any lot, anywhere, in any town, is entitled to be constructed on, provided it meets that 5,000 square foot requirement. It didn't have to be an existing structure on it, it could be vacant land, it doesn't matter. And so that's the underlying issue of law in this particular case. Now, in paragraph 14, I summarized the appeals court decision, which expanded the permissible use of special permits and the criteria that the court used. And as Chairman Gray pointed out last time, this is hot off the press, this is August of this year. And so the requirements that they have, the existing dwelling is non-conforming, which we have in this case, the proposed construction is similarly non-conforming, but does not derogate from the intent of the bylaw, no, be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conformity. That is also true here, and the proposed construction would improve the neighborhood by eliminating an eyesore and the overall value of the adjoining properties in appearance in the neighborhood. All of those are met here. Now, I also quote in paragraph 15, the 48, section six, section about the 5,000 square feet. Now, there was also some discussion, and we didn't skirt it, we wanted to hit this issue head-on of abandonment. It is our position that the old structure was not legally abandoned. Now, as a practical matter, we know nobody's lived there. As a practical matter, we know that it sits there. But the fact that it does sit there, and it does, and it was not raised by the prior owner, owner, myself as current owner, under my form of trust, or that it wasn't destroyed by some event, one of the cases I quote was a fire, another one was a hurricane, and so in order to be technically determined as abandoned, it's not a question of somebody living there, it's a question of is there an intent to abandon? And that intent to abandon is defined by not only overt or even an implied expression of intent, but also an event. And so that does not comply with Pondview. By the way, Joe, Webby's map, which we'll get back to in a minute, does list Pondview, AKA Janus Lane. I brought my tax bill along, the town of Carver has for years and years and forever indicated it was 12 Pondview Way. But we understand there's really nothing in the name of the street except to label it correctly. So his plan says AKA, so it's Janus, Pondview comes around back, whatever the case may be. That's not a really relevant issue, the name of the road, except to get it technically defined. Sorry to divert. So we produce a position in the memorandum that none of the cases that define abandonment would reach the conclusion that this property was abandoned as a legal matter. Now, in other cases, the owners have said, you know, that they were not going to do anything with the property, or that they actually tore it down, and that was an intent of abandonment that they tore it down. But in this case, we don't have that. So we believe that the legal definition of abandonment is not met in this case, and we're very familiar with the zoning bylaw in Carver, which basically is a codification of the state's statute on the subject, which is fine in and of itself, but that has to be interpreted. And in the very famous Dialaway case, which has been quoted for many, many years now, the Mass Appeals Court said, "The voluntary demolition of a building constitutes abandonment." But here, the non-use or sale of the property does not itself constitute abandonment. And Dialaway case is quoted in every memorandum of this nature all the time. So if it was voluntarily demolished, different story. So that's the first prong of our position. And because of Gloucester expanding the permissibility of a special permit, and because the property still sits there, it's a non-conforming structure, we believe that a special permit is allowed. Now, Mr. Jermaine, at the last meeting, I think my memory of the meeting and my review the YouTube recording did bring up at one point that, well, the new proposed structure and the old one don't even touch. And that's true, they don't. But they don't have to. The issue in these cases is, do you have a non-conforming structure? Are you reconstructing it, expanding it, increasing it, even to the extent of a new non-conformity that wouldn't have been allowed under the zoning bylaw in the first place, but because it's an existing non-conforming structure, would be allowed under the reconstruction? It's interesting that in the Gloucester case, they were raising a garage, they were destroying it, but not before the application went through the ZBA, and not before the case was decided by the appeals court. So our position, again, not to be repetitive, is the fact that it is entitled to a special permit. And again, I'd ask the board to rule on both applications because obviously, relief under one or the other would be sufficient, it's a practical matter, but if there was ever an appeal or challenge, we would certainly want to be able to defend the grant of the special permit because the special permit criteria, even with Gloucester, is somewhat less. The topographical financial hardship, which we believe we have, are purposes of variance that Ms. King is going to respond to. Nonetheless, it's different, so we would request that to be the case. It certainly doesn't derogate from the community, the building inspector, under your bylaw, section 2254, the building inspector, a zoning agent, same person here in Carver, does, is given the determination of whether he determines the increased proposed structure would amount to a derogation of the intent of the bylaw and would otherwise be a derogation of the community. And the building inspector's determined, no, that's not the case, and you have his email, it says that after second thought, he first thought of variance. email, it says that after second thought, he first thought of variance, but after second thought, he determined that a special permit was what was needed under 2254, and that's why we originally applied under 2254. Again, I respect and I appreciate the chairman's alteration, unknown to me till I've read the public hearing notice, that it was either/or, and there's nothing but, that's nothing but a plus. I mean, there's no question about that. As long as the board rules on both of them, I respect and appreciate the fact and support the fact that the application was either/or. If you look at the Joe Webby plan, what you find is that the existing nonconforming structure was, I put it in my memo, it was... Kurt, hold on one second, I'll get the exact measure. It's not, the existing nonstructure's nonconforming as the sideline, as the sideline on both sides. The existing structure does conform to the bylaw of it being more than 50 feet from the front, and it does comply with the bylaw in terms of the rear dimension, okay? And reviewing the ConCon hearing that didn't go to, neither one, Steve Kotowski went to the first one, Joe Webby went to the second one, it was evident from that discussion that the ConCon was not going to approve of the plan. Keep in mind that when Steve Kotowski came into the ConCon, the first meeting, and I gave the copies of the minutes of both meetings in my package, when he came in the first meeting, he proposed the structure exactly where it was, with a little build-out of the porch, and that was it. And it was very evident, they were very nice about it, they were very kind in their approach, but they were very evident in the fact that they wanted it 65 feet from the pond, and that's why the new proposed structure ends up being around 66 and a half, or you can measure it exactly, Joe Webby has done it on the plan. And so as a result, to get it out of that 65-foot zone, even though admittedly it's still in the 100-foot zone. And so that's why the new plan was created, and that's why the second ConCon hearing occurred. And there was very little to the discussion in the second meeting, they loved the plan, it was great, unanimous approval, Mrs. Jermaine was joining the unanimous approval at that time, and that's where the special, the order of conditions came from. All recorded, Britt Monroe recorded it at the board of, at the registry herself, she took it herself to the registry. And so the two dimensions, a minute ago, I temporarily lost track of, 17.7 feet on one side and 23.3 feet on the other side, and both of those are nonconforming under the current Kava bylaw.
17.7 and 23.3?
23.3 on one side and 17.7 on the other. And your bylaw says third.
All right. Could you wrap up on your comments with regard to the special permit?
Took your words out of my mouth, I'm done. Let me turn it over to Ms. King.
And before she begins, and I'm anxious to hear from you, as I know the rest of us are too, I'd like for Mr. Jermaine to speak with regard to your comments concerning the Conservation Commission and what transpired, I guess, Mr. Jermaine, a couple of years ago now at that meeting?
Look at that drawing. In the last meeting, after some discussion, I accepted the will of the board to recuse myself, because I was a signatory on the special, on the order of conditions. My argument at that time, and it's on recorded, that I did not want to make that determination till I had a chance to go back and watch the videos, because I couldn't remember this case at all. So I did go back and watch the videos. And I'm sorry, sir, but I have to differ with your opinion, we did not force you to move anything. Let me finish. Steve came and proposed on a 1999 drawing, which is why we continued the case, we want an updated drawing, because he brought us a drawing that nobody could understand and nobody could read, and that's evident in the video also. But during that conversation, the enclosure of the little porch, as you put it, took it out of the original footprint, and that wasn't going to fly with the members of the Conservation Commission. And Savory Moore asked Steve, "Could you move the house?" Simple question, can you move the house? Steve said, "I'll look at it and see." I made a motion to continue the hearing pending an updated current plan, and that's, that was the close of that. When they came back to the next meeting that we had, he brought the new plan, and at that time, the entire house had been taken out of the 65, which there's no question, it delighted conservation. But the comment was made during the first conservation meeting, that as much as we may not like it, and this was against Savory Moore, as much as we may not like it, we have no choice but to grant you the variance to build in the existing footprint. What blew it out the window was you wanted to square off the house, because now it's no longer in the existing footprint. So that was the determining factor, and Savory saying, "Can you move the house if this is what you want to build?" So I take exception to, the hardship was created by the Conservation Commission, in fact, it was not. It was created by your desire to square off the building, because we would have had no option but to let you build this house on the existing footprint, exactly within that footprint, not by adding on to the size of the dimension of the property, of the building itself. So Steve moved it out, and then Joe Webby came to that second meeting, where the new drawing had been done. So based on that, I feel that I can be very objective in this, and it's up to this board, I would like to unrecuse myself from this, but I will certainly go with the will of the board.
Well, I find Mr. Jermaine's explanation credible, and that there was no specific instruction from the Conservation Commission, as alleged by this petition. I do want to inquire of Ms. Clark and Mr. Mueller if they have any objection to Mr. Jermaine now sitting as a voting member on this case, so that we have a board of four.
I also went back and listened to both meetings and found the same thing. I think at the point in which they were signing the order of conditions, it might have been Mr. Jermaine, but someone said, "Oh, I think you're going to have to go to zoning," and a voice in the back said, "Oh, we know we have to go to zoning."
That's correct.
So it was, I listened to every meeting that it was on. Time I won't get back, but I felt I had to do the due diligence, and I don't think that the ConCon made them move the house, which is part of my reasoning in reviewing this case. So I have no problem with Mr. Jermaine sitting.
I'm good.
Mr. Jermaine, do you feel if you can render a fair and impartial and unbiased decision?
Yes.
With regard to this case, I then ask the board members for, I guess, a vote as to whether Mr. Jermaine should now be allowed to rejoin as a voting member in view of the clarification just made.
Make that motion.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Mr. Jermaine is going to vote aye, too, right?
I would abstain, it's my own vote. But I can vote yes if you want.
I would appreciate that.
Okay, aye.
Because I don't want to have to invoke the rule of necessity, which brings us down to a board of three, as Ms. Moniz was not with us the last time, and Ms. DeCarle was not a voting member. So we've got now a voting board of four. Do you have any objections to Mr. Jermaine serving as a voting member of this board? Mr. Korea, on this particular petition, do you have any objection?
Well, I'm not so sure I understand part of what he was saying from my review of the ConCon hearing on YouTube, but the last time, he said he didn't feel like he needed to recuse himself, and I said, "Fine, I would waive it if there was an issue," because he presented the fact that by voting for the order of conditions, and therefore the plan in the ConCon, that he didn't see a conflict between him voting for the approval here. So there was a consistency in that position.
So I take it to understand that you have no objection to him rejoining us as a voting member on this particular petition, is that correct?
Well, again, if I understood it correctly, the basis of his not, of his own personal feeling, and the board, the chairman kind of overruled it and said, "Look, we don't want the visual appearance of there being a conflict, so we feel that you should recuse yourself," even though he offered not.
Now, we have a clarification on the facts, however, since board members have gone back and listened to the ConCon hearing. So again, I ask for the third time, do you have any objection to Mr. Jermaine now serving as a voting member on this board at this time with regard to this petition? Yes or no?
My only answer to that is that, is, I'm not sure that's easy to answer, if...
Yes, it is, it's yes or no?
If there's a consistency, no. And if there is an inconsistency, then there would be a conflict, there'd be a difference between the vote that he took in the ConCon and the vote he would make here.
Now, he's voting now based on this plan, this petition.
Right.
So, for the fourth time, do you have any objection to him sitting on this board as a voting member on this particular petition that you're presenting this evening? Yes or no?
I guess the answer's no.
Okay, thank you.
If I understand the premise of it, I'm not sure I do, but if I do, then the answer's no.
No objection, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I might add, part of what led to that recusal was my position as vice chair and as senior member on this board, in which they will defer to me at times, was that the testimony was, "The ConCon made me do it, and at that point, I needed clarification." And with Mr. Jermaine saying he didn't honestly remember, which means he couldn't remember whether they said it or not, and your position that the ConCon made me do it, which makes me look at it differently, I felt that maybe he should step down. In the meantime, I made a point to listen to both meetings, that your petition was presented, I'm well satisfied that the ConCon didn't know what was going on, it was, they came in and saw a new plan, as far as changes go. And if Mr. Jermaine, I feel confident Mr. Jermaine can make a fair and impartial zoning judgment on this. But I think, I think I led that charge, and I think while my reasoning was sound, it was probably maybe premature. Go with that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Thank you. Very often, in a conservation meeting, and I've been on ConCon for three years, we'll see a plan come before us, one was just recent, where a lady wanted to put a pool in her backyard. So the question got asked, "Can you move the pool?" And it turned out that the drawing was wrong, but, and the pool was never in the 65, but a lot of times, that becomes one of the first questions. If something is infringing on the wetlands from a conservation standpoint, the first question we'll ask is, well, can you do that, can you move this? Not you have to move it, it's can you move it? And that was the same question that was asked of Steve Kotowski, can you move the house? It was never a demand, that we forced you to move the house. It wasn't either/or, if you don't move the house, we're going to vote no. It didn't come out that way, that's not the way it was done. So just so there's some clarification, we'll often ask for the least amount of impact into the wetlands, and the conservation's governed by a whole different set of rules than we govern by in the zoning board of appeals. So thank you for your confidence.
Brief response to that, I reviewed the YouTube, I only viewed it once, I should have maybe reviewed it twice, but I thought once was sufficient. I don't particularly recall, and I'll defer to your memory of it, I don't particularly recall the issue about the porch being a big issue. There was a porch there, and to that extent, I think it still was a footprint of what the original tri, house was. It may not have been the foundation, but it was still a footprint of the original house. And I can only tell you, because I wasn't there personally that night, but I can tell you on all honesty, that when I talked to Steve Kotowski after the meeting, he was like, "Well, you know, they wanted us to move the house, come back with a new plan, we told them we would do that." And even in my memo, I said, "requested," it didn't say "demand." I don't think anywhere was saying it was an absolute demand of the ConCon that they'd do that, but certainly, it was an idea that was on the floor, can you move the house, can you get it out of the zone? The last meeting, Mr. Jermaine, we were kind of both scratching our heads a little bit, whether or not the particular movement of the house was in compliance with the 65-foot, and now we know it is by Joe Webby's plan. And so therefore, we felt like we had to move the house to get an order of conditions that was...
Okay. I think, Mr. Korea, with all due respect, we've chewed on this particular issue long enough this evening.
Right.
We have a number of other people here and other cases in back of you.
That's fine.
And we are anxious to hear from you.
One additional, just one additional comment, and that is that I don't think that whole discussion alters the special permit issue at all, because you could, even if there was no order of conditions, and the ConCon wasn't even involved, and this was not a wetland area, I think that the house can qualify as proposed under a special permit, under the Gloucester case.
Thank you.
I think the ConCon really is somewhat not relevant to the special permit piece, it may be relevant to the variance piece, it may be.
All right. So let's hear from your assistant.
Hello, good evening. So I am here to help with the variance issue on this piece. So to start off, I just want to say, I know you have everything, and you've taken a chance to review it, so I don't want to go any much too into detail. However, a large basis of the argument was based on our understanding that ConCon had instructed to move the house. So the extent that kind of this memorandum and what I'm saying here tonight relies on that fact, that was our interpretation at the outset, that that, that those were the facts. So under the, you're requesting a dimensional variance for the property, and under that, as you are all aware, has to relate to the topography, soil condition, shape, it must be a substantial hardship, or if it is not to be granted, it would be a substantial hardship, and there must not be any substantial detriment to the public good, in summary. And so relating to the top, beginning with the beginning piece, relating to the topography, soil conditions and shape, I think that's pretty clear, that based on where the property is, and the fact that it had to be approved by ConCon and the wetlands, makes it a unique to the zoning district, because it abuts the pond bed. And then the substantial hardship piece, I think our position was that because ConCon had instructed to move the property outside of that zone, there was a case that was fairly similar, and there were two properties, to summarize it quickly, there were two properties, and the neighbors were going to exchange properties so that the petitioner could create a home on that land. In order to do so, they had to request approval, but prior to that exchange of land went through, the Metropolitan District Commission actually took part of the neighbor's land, so the parties were not able to exchange that land. And in doing so, the court upheld the zoning board's decision that because of the taking by eminent domain, and because it was an action, extrinsic act of public authority, not within his control, it was a substantial hardship. So that was our position, based on our understanding that ConCon had instructed the building to, the structure to be moved forward. And then lastly, I think that it's clear that there's no substantial detriment to the public good right now, the property is kind of an eyesore to the neighborhood, we would call it, and Mr. Korea has plans to create a livable home that would increase the, will be aesthetically more attractive, and kind of increase the effect on the entire neighborhood.
Thank you for that succinct presentation.
You're welcome.
All of us are grateful. I do have one technical question and then one general question for the board. You folks indicated that your, that one sideline is 17.7 feet away from the proposed construction, the other one 23.3?
That's the existing structure.
The existing structure.
Right.
So if you were, you're obviously in need of zoning relief at this point. From a dimensional standpoint, you need side lot relief. Is that fair to say?
I didn't hear that.
Correct.
Yes?
Sideline relief.
Side yard relief, right.
How much, how many feet do you need on the sidelines?
On the new structure, we need front yard relief.
They need setback.
Because...
I know, but we're going to do the side yard first. You need side yard relief on the new structure.
Yes.
Yes.
And Eric, you want to calculate that?
Yes. Joe Webby has it in his plan, and I put it in the memo.
Go to one side, on the new structure, and then it's 23 on the other, 30, right?
Well, you could ask.
This is the new plan now, right?
I don't know. Is this updated one? I know we had questions about lot lines. Is there another plan that came about after our last meeting?
All I can do is give you what I have here.
You got an extra one over there? The new plan is...
We do have two, if anyone needs two.
Well, I gave the board eight copies, I believe it was.
Oh, okay. So this is supposed to be the new one?
Seven. The new structure, if you look at Joe Webby's plan, the new structure on one side is a combination of 4.4 feet and 11.7 feet. So that's 16.1 feet. That's the proposed new structure on one side. So your bylaw applies 30.
Okay. 16.1 on one side, and what do you got on the other?
The other side is, appears to be in conformity because it's...
Yeah, the other side's 32.
32.6.
The other side is okay.
Right. It's only one side on the dimensional new structure.
Now, do we also need front setback?
Front setback, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. What's the front setback?
On the proposed, it's 21.2, and you have 50. So that would be a differential of...
Do we need, Eric?
28.8.
Frontage and then setback.
Which, by the way, one of the cases I cited is exactly 26 feet of variance.
So one, one side is only 16.1, and the front setback is only 21.2?
That's correct.
Do you need any other dimensional relief?
I don't think so.
Based on the new plan?
No, I don't think so.
Where the new house would go?
No.
Okay. That's my technical question for now. I have another question, though, generally for the board. This is going to take a while. I have a number of things I want to go through based on this memo. A number of things. And I observe that it's getting close to 8:00, and we have two more new petitions in back of this. So I wonder what the pleasure of the board is about continuing this to the next meeting. Because I could see this easily going another 45 minutes.
This could go another hour.
I have a question also.
Proceed.
You stated a couple times in your conversation that this, again, was moved at the insistence of the Conservation Commission. You did, not only took the house out of the 65, but you moved it 30 feet farther north and it had to go. If you were, if your intent was to move the house out of the 65 because we wanted it that way, the 65 is in the middle of the existing property to be raised. That house could be backed up almost, I don't have a scale, but you could back that house up almost 20 more feet to that 65 line and still be conforming.
With regard to the front setback?
And you only would then require maybe 10 feet of front setback. So there's no way that conservation required you to stick the house way up there, 21 feet setback off the street. That's the truth. So the 65, the 65 argument, if the back of that house was on the edge of the 65, it might have held a little bit of water, but you're 20 feet north of that 65.
Well, first of all, I didn't, in my memo and in our presentation, I didn't use the word insisted. Steve Kotowski came away with a clear impression they wanted it to be moved back. But if you look at the 30 by 24 footprint, and you back it up much more towards the pond, now I think you're going to get, you're going to get some additional sideline problems that you don't get when you put it where it's presently located. Plus, the whole septic system design has been brought up front of that property, and I think there was some coordination with that. Mr. Kozlowski and I, after the last meeting, who's here tonight, we talked a great deal, and he was satisfied that the proposed driveway was exactly where we had said it would be, take it away from his property, and he was satisfied that the variances that were needed by the Board of Health to put the location of the septic where it is, we're also satisfied. So I believe, he can speak for himself, but I believe we have had that discussion afterwards, and there's no issue as far as that's concerned.
I appreciate that. But in your own memorandum, it says that the Conservation Commission requested that you move it beyond the 65. You moved it beyond 85. So it didn't have to go that close to the street. So maybe a continuation is a great idea for this.
I have one other question. It has to do with what I was just asking about, and that is dimensional relief. It appears to us, and this is why I got up and was looking over people's shoulders at the maps here, appears to us that you're going to need frontage, too. Frontage relief. Not just front setback, but frontage relief. Because you're, what, 97.5?
Yeah.
Could we need what?
Need 150.
No.
Yeah.
95 is here.
Yeah, you don't have the furniture.
If it's setback on the existing foundation.
Sure.
So it looks like you need front setback relief, you need frontage relief, and you need...
Side.
Side, one side.
One side.
One side, not both. Would you folks agree with that? Based upon the requirements, the coverage by law?
Hold distance?
This is just a...
To clarify, or just so that I have a better picture, are you referring to the 95.7?
Yeah.
As the, okay.
Yeah.
That is the whole lot, right?
And you need 150 according to our bylaws. So that's the frontage relief that you need. Then you've got the front setback you need and one side you need. Does that, does that seem right to you? Yes, no?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Am I incorrect, though, that if the house were to, just hypothetically, if the house were to sit within the footprint of the old house, even if it overlapped a little bit, does that not make a non-conforming lot conforming because they are...
A reconstruction.
You wouldn't need the furniture variance?
Here we get into an issue that we began to discuss the last time and which Mr. Korea rightly raised this evening, and that is the issue of abandonment. And whether there is abandonment under the case law in Massachusetts or not, given the circumstances, the factual circumstances here. There are, as I alluded to a few minutes ago, and I've been trying to keep quiet about this, there are a number of things I want to go through in connection with this memo.
Yeah.
And your interpretation of certain cases, including but not limited to Comstock, which I read very differently than you, Mr. Korea. Because of the nature of Gloucester's bylaws, specific bylaws, which are different than ours. So we can have that discussion, I think, better the next time. Now, I know there's one case in the queue for our next meeting. We can handle this a couple of ways. We can continue on this evening, which I think most of us in this room would rather move on. We can schedule a separate meeting just for you so that we don't run into any other cases. But right now, if we just continue it to our regularly scheduled next meeting, we would have one other matter on for that evening. So I leave it to the pleasure of the board, whether they want to continue with this tonight or whether they would like to schedule a separate meeting just for this case or add it to our agenda for our next regularly scheduled meeting.
I'd personally like to see it be a separate meeting, but I'd like to hear from the couple of people that raised their hand when they hear.
I'm not going to deprive the public of comment tonight. But Ms. Karli, do you have a preference?
A separate case, a separate meeting.
Ms. Clark?
I prefer to tag it on at the end of our next meeting, but I will do a separate meeting.
Mueller?
I'm fine, except I'm not in town from the 15th.
I don't have the luxury of being drawn anywhere, so.
So, Mr. Korea, if you will allow us to have a short continuance of your case, it will allow us as well to digest properly this late filed memo that was just distributed to us this evening. That will be helpful to us. And then we can come back and discuss Comstock, and we can discuss special permit versus variance and which, if either, applies here. I'm not suggesting that you won't get relief. All I'm suggesting is that, I think, given the space of time that we have available this evening and the fact that we did get a memo late in the day, and also in view of the fact that we have a number of highly technical legal issues that I want to speak to, that maybe we have a go around the next time, either in a separately scheduled meeting or a regularly scheduled one. So I think I'm hearing that the sense of the board is that we have a separate meeting just for this case. Am I correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yes?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with tacking it on at the end, but I'm afraid if we get one or two other cases that come up, then we're tacking it on at the very end, and that's kind of unfair to the applicants.
Then we get tired and cranky. Eric, when did you say you were back? In November?
It's up to you, the 16th.
So you'll be home by the 15th. Okay. That's a Monday. So 17 is a Tuesday, 18...
Yep.
Other people with other meetings?
Kelly, you good for the 17th?
I have, yeah, I have nothing conflicting.
I could do the 17th.
Yes, and Mr. Jermaine, you're good?
Yeah, 17th is good.
Ms. Clark, you're good?
I think I'm good for the 17th.
Mr. Korea and assistant, okay for the 17th?
Yes.
Sure. That's also a Tuesday, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
At 7:30?
7:00.
7:00.
Yeah. And you'll be the first and only case on for that evening.
I didn't want such notoriety.
But you've had a good, you've had a good opportunity, both of you, tonight to present. So when we come back, it's going to be my intention to kind of pick up with this memo and walk you guys through it and tell you where my head's at on some of the assertions that are made in that memo. And we can have a candid discussion about whether there is a legal basis for the relief that you're requesting here. Either special permit or variance, or both as you're requesting, as I understand it.
I'd also like to see a plan of what you're going to build. Design of...
Elevation.
The proposed house.
It's not been determined.
Okay.
You know...
Okay.
Like any property, it's possible that someone else will pick up the slack and build it, you know, other than myself. I mentioned last time I've talked with one builder in particular, but once the permissibility occurs, you know, then it's up for a possible design by the person that actually would build it, or even the ultimate retail purchaser that might want a style a little differently than what I would want or a former builder would want. So I think that'd be very difficult. It would have to comply, of course, with zoning as far as height and everything else of that nature. It would very much be in the neighborhood design of things, probably a two-bedroom colonial, second story, a couple of bedrooms.
Right. You say proposed two bedrooms, so I assume that it would be two bedrooms. I don't know if that's a Board of Health regulation, whether it's limited to that.
Yeah, we'd have to get a special, we'd have to get a two-bedroom restriction to record with the D anyway. That'll be filed with the final Board of Health. Joe Webby was at the Board of Health today, and he said, "This is what we need," and so on. And he was prepared to go forward based on the zoning permissibility. Now we have a profit to bill, and he would proceed with the other aspects. He flipped back to me the one issue about getting the two-bedroom restriction, which is going to go on record, which is easy to do.
Okay. But also in keeping with the neighborhood, that kind of thing?
Absolutely. We were talking about a two, just to give you the betterment of our thoughts, again, somebody comes along and says, "Oh, I want this structure" versus that, you know, it may change. But the idea that I talked about with Bobby Pezzan was a colonial-style, two-story structure, both bedrooms up, like three and a half rooms down, something like that. Not a very big structure at 30 by 24.
The select board is meeting that night, so we will be somewhere else.
Well, it's already going to be...
Right.
So we can be in the basement.
We can probably be in room four.
You want to move to Wednesday, then? So we can get up here and get a little bit more distance?
It's only going to be, should be kind of it.
We move to the bigger room, room four, would be okay? Or we can move it to Wednesday, might be Concom, up here.
Room four, I think, should be fine.
Room four should be okay.
Okay. We'll keep it on Tuesday, the 17th.
Yeah, that's better for me.
Now, I do want to open this up to members of the public who may want to make a comment, even though we're still at a preliminary stage here, a fact-finding stage, if you will, a discussion stage. So, does anybody want to be heard at this point, Eric? Want to make any comments? Yes, Mrs. Kay? Can you identify yourself and your address, please?
Kathleen Kozlowski, 10 on View Way. I merely wanted to say that Mr. Jermaine's recollection of that meeting that I was at for the conservation, that first time it came up, you're absolutely correct. It was suggested. It was absolutely not a forced issue in any way, shape, or form. They came before the board and presented plans from 1999.
Right.
Oh, yeah. We were there. And I just wanted to say, there's no question in my mind that that's how it is.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kozlowski. Nice to see you again.
Nice to see you.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments? Yes, sir. Can you identify yourself?
I'd like to make a comment.
Sure. What's your name and address?
My name is Bobby Coligan, 13 Pondview Way.
You were here the last time, were you not?
Yes, I was.
Nice to see you again.
You sure it's Pondview Way?
I'm at 13 Pondview.
You sure it's Pondview? It's not AKA Pondview.
No, no, no. It was not bring up that subject. It's like a conflicting, all kinds of conflicting addresses.
You're going to give the poor guy a complex, then?
No, no, no. Okay. I just, you know, I can't understand what's going on here, and I just can't fathom why he's going through all this work and why he just put the house back the way it was. And it falls under all rules and regulations by the sounds of what everybody's talking about. He has the right, it's not an abandonment, to put the house, if he wants to put a two-story house there. I'm not stopping him from building a house. I know that that's, he has a house there, and he has the right to put the house back. I just can't see him trying to move the house, relocate and everything, and to put the house back where it was.
Thank you for that. Anyone else have any questions or comments? So at the beginning, I told you, everybody and folks at home, that this was a very technical case involving a lot of legal issues, and for some of us, some history that was only dimly remembered at the time, but now is more specifically remembered, although in deference to Ms. Kozlowski, she remembered very clearly all along. So we're going to continue this until November seventeenth. This will be a special meeting of the ZBA, room four, which is currently being used for early voting. We're going to be down in that room because the select board will be up here. It's going to be at 7:00 PM. And there will be no notices going out in the mail. This will be advertised on the website. And you're getting notice from me now that that's when our next meeting on this case will occur. So, Mr. Korea and Assistant, you've had about an hour of our time, and we appreciate the thoroughness of your presentation. And we're going to chew on some more things the next time and see where we're going to go. So I would like a motion to continue this case to November seventeenth.
So moved, and it's case number nine dash zero dash R.
Second.
On favor?
Aight.
So thank you both for your patience. Thank you both for your presentations. And we look forward to seeing you again in about three weeks.
Thank you.
Happy Halloween.
You too.
Look a tree.
Thank you, Mr. Korea.
Thank you.
Okay, our next case is public hearing case number 111-125. The petitioner is being John and Susan Sontag. Where are you? Hello?
Hi, how are you?
Good, and where's John?
He's not here, but I have a contractor here.
Okay, so come on up, sit at the table while I finish the read of this. This was a petition that was filed seeking a special permit in variance pursuant to sections 2245(c), 2310, 2320, and 50 to 21 to 1522 and 5300 and the following provisions of 300 of the Carver zoning bylaw for property located at 20 Bo Street in Carver, assesses map 111 lot 125 for the purpose of constructing a 26 by 36-foot garage that will be 10 feet from the street. The proposed garage is 936 square feet, when the maximum allowed is 700 square feet. And a front setback is required of 50 feet. And they're only 10 feet from the street, as proposed. And all of this in a residential agricultural district. So as is our custom, we'd like to hear from you folks first. And you can tell us why you want to do this and regale us.
Basically, the reason for it being 10 feet to the street is for a pass-through to the current garage and to the backyard, which would leave thirteen and a half feet in between the proposed garage and the existing house.
I'm sorry, I was flipping papers. Could you just say that again?
It's just pretty simple. It's thirteen and a half feet from our proposed area to the current house. We'd leave them room for their current garage and a pass-through to their backyard. There's a fence there with a gate, so.
Do we have a map or a plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's in the packet.
That's in the packet.
I don't get one either in my packet. I guess only some people. Thank you. Did you say you have a current garage?
There's a current, I mean, there's a two-car garage on the house now.
Where?
Attached?
Yep, it's attached, right there. You see, this is thirteen point.
So you're going, you're butting the new garage thirteen and a half feet from the current garage?
Yeah, so it'd be thirteen and a half feet in between.
And you're ten and a half feet from the sidewalk, right?
Correct.
And that's from the edge of the sidewalk?
Yes.
The side setback was 10 feet on a detached.
Yeah.
Right, but what's the?
So what are we looking for here?
Oversized.
Oversized and a front setback.
It would be 936.
Doesn't need a front setback. It's 100 feet from Bo Street. The address is Bo Street, correct?
Yes.
Correct, yep.
So the house is 85 feet back from Bo Street, and the garage is like another 30 feet beyond that. Am I wrong?
Correct.
So you don't need setback on the front?
The side.
Side doesn't need it, it's 10 foot, is required. So all you need is the oversized permit.
Perfect.
All they're looking for is an oversized permit, they don't need setbacks.
Yeah, but what about the town, the town road and the center line beyond?
It's 10 feet from the lot line.
It's 10, so they own up to the garage, then?
Who?
Town by eminent domain, a street, a town road, right?
Huh?
Are you talking about Frank Street?
Yes.
He's talking about Frank Street. They're on a corner.
They're on a corner.
Yeah?
Typically, a town will own, not just to the edge of the pavement, they'll go further.
There a sidewalk there?
Sidewalk, right.
A sidewalk, yes.
You're owned to the sidewalk?
It's 10 feet.
Right, well, it shows that, but by eminent domain, I don't know if the town will have any questions on that. Just, yeah. Last the town, last the highway department.
I guess so, because I've never heard that one.
Yes, from the center line of the road to the, it has, it reaches beyond the boundary.
How can we pay taxes on that?
That's the way it is.
Not really. Okay.
Go over it, yes, go over it.
I guess we're going to need to.
So would you enter the, I'm sorry. So would you enter the garage from Frank Street? Or from what looks like a driveway?
That would be the side of the garage. They have kind of like a horseshoe driveway now. So if you're coming down Frank Street, you can enter their driveway.
We'll go straight into the garage, so the side of the garage would be on Frank's side.
And you have a lot of cars?
He's got a lot of toys.
Have you seen, just, I'm asking.
In the backyard, you have a shed and a pool.
So, but the pool is really on Frank Street, too, so we follow your rules. Then the town can eminent domain the diving board.
Well, it's beyond the, it's beyond the distance.
Beyond what distance?
Beyond the 10 feet. Beyond the 10 feet. The 10 feet's the long line.
Okay.
That was my only question.
Okay.
Looking for it?
Big brother.
Does anybody believe in a sidewalk?
Yeah.
Yes? For those of you here tonight and watching at home, it's the custom of this board that if one voting member wants to do a sidewalk, then we go as a board. And I see at least two people indicating, maybe three, that they would like to do a sidewalk in this case.
Wait a minute, we may not have to, Mr. Chairman, if we want to take a peek at this.
Right, before we go any further on that issue, I kind of interrupted you. Is there anything else you want to say about this project?
No.
Is there a second floor to the garage?
It would just be storage, not living space.
Do you have a picture of it?
We haven't gone to the drawing, I talked to Mr. Francis about it. He said that after we went through this, then we could draw something or have something professionally drawn to him.
And what's the size?
Twenty, it's twenty-six by 36, so 936 square feet.
Is it going to be a two-car, two-car garage?
Three-car garage.
Three-car. Three.
Yeah.
You have a two.
Twenty by 36, it would be. You have a garage now?
Yes.
What are you going to do with that garage?
Right now, it's just going to stay the way it is.
It's a lot easier when you look at this, Eric, Mr. Chairman, ladies. Pass that down. That's the best word. So that makes life a little bit easier. The drawings, no disrespect, terrible.
I will let him know.
Doesn't give us a lot of detail. So now I understand when you say there's a horseshoe and stuff like that, you look at it on Google Earth and you can see exactly what you're talking about.
How are you getting to the garage that's already there?
It's part of the driveway, you should, pass that down.
I walk by this house like four times a week, and I don't think I've ever noticed it. Walk my dogs.
While they're looking at the photo.
God bless Google Earth, sometimes.
Is there going to be electricity in this garage?
Yes.
Yep.
Will there be heat in this garage?
No.
No.
Will this garage be plumbed?
No.
We would probably want to have a water spigot. The reason I ask that, I say that, Mr. Chairman asks that all the time, but, you know, there may come the day when you want to wash your car in front of the garage door, and the nearest spigot's at the house, so 100 feet of hose later.
Okay.
As opposed to a spigot being right there without having indoor heated, you know, I'm not, we're not talking about the bathroom and hot water, just to give the opportunity to have a water faucet. So you should think about that one.
Yep.
Because once you say no, then that becomes in the order, and then it's awful hard to change that.
Okay.
Everybody on board with this picture? We still want to do a site visit, or?
Yes.
There's always one.
I think it'd be a good idea.
And honestly, I'd like to see stakes out there when we come, just so that we can get an idea of where it's going to sit on your property.
Not a problem.
Can I ask you a question? What's directly across the street, is that a?
It's a shed that was, I'm not, it was a garage.
Right on the street?
It's basically 10 feet.
So right across the street is pretty much exactly what they're asking for.
When was that built?
Like two years ago.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
See this? Directly across the street. Their driveway's right here, this is right across the street. Two years ago?
Around two years ago, I wouldn't say it was.
Yeah, we gave the variance.
That would have probably required a variance.
We gave them a variance on Brianna. It had, they had some special circumstances, and they also don't have another garage. They had some circumstances where the foundation got poured differently from the drawing, I think, was their case.
Oh, I remember.
Not that we're sure if that was it, but it might have been.
All right.
Anyway.
So as this would be a second garage, we're going to be using this for cars? Yes?
Yes.
No? And the garage that you have now is being used for what?
Right now, it's gym equipment in there.
Probably just storage, he's got a gym in there. So it wouldn't be used for a garage, for parking or anything.
I mean, if you guys shifted this just a little bit, all you would need is a size variance. Well, all they need is size anyway, because.
I don't think they need any other than size now.
Well, I thought, Eric.
Just size.
Just size.
I'll check with the town, but I think it's just size.
Just size.
All right.
If I can aggravate Alan, I will.
Yeah. You look.
Thank you, Eric.
He tries hard.
What's in the garage now that you say is being used for storage? Just gym, gym equipment and other things?
There's gym equipment and his workbench and.
Got to have a workbench.
Are you moving that into the big garage, or are you moving him into the big garage?
The cars will go in the big garage, and he can use that as his workout room.
Do we want to set a date for the sidewalk, since I think that's the only thing holding us up here?
Well, I'd like to know when our next regular meeting's going to be, so that we can... How soon do you want to do this, before the snow flies, or what's your plan here?
Yeah, because we filed this back in, because of COVID.
You filed this when?
When did we?
I first came in right before COVID hit, and then obviously.
March?
Yeah, everything got setback after that, so.
Let's talk about our next regular date.
Wow. Well, if we're doing the seventeenth, as that, with the special.
Do we want to do a second meeting the same week?
We could do it, the nineteenth is a Thursday. Otherwise, you're into Thanksgiving week, and then we're looking into December. That's not fair.
I mean, I'll do, I'll do a second meeting the nineteenth.
Eric?
I do this, I do a second meeting that week, nineteenth.
So let's do 11/19 for you.
Let's say Thursday.
And then we have to decide on a date for the site visit.
Usually, we like to do like 4:30, 5 o'clock in the morning, that good?
Works for me.
Well, if we do it late in the day, you have pizzas ready?
Sure.
Absolutely.
Well, if it was conservation after 10, we'd have cocktails.
Saturday, the seventh?
Saturday, the seventh.
Anybody?
I won't be here, but I'll take a ride by.
You won't be here?
He's going the first to the fifteenth, so he's.
Well, if we're on the nineteenth, well, you wouldn't be here the fourteenth anyway. So whatever is good for everybody else, I can make either one of those days.
11/7 at 9:00 AM for the visit.
Is that okay?
And per Ms. Moniz's request, please have it staked out so we can take a look. And then we'll come back on the nineteenth. And unlike the case that was just before us, we should be ready to make a decision on where the other.
Thank you very much.
Okay?
Is there anyone here?
Sorry it's taken so long.
Anyone here that wants to comment with regard to this particular project? Seeing no one, I'll take a motion to continue this hearing on the nineteenth of November.
So moved.
Do I hear a second? All in favor?
Aight.
Do I hear a motion to do a site visit on November 7th at 9:00 AM?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aight.
Okay, so you're good?
Thank you very much.
You got a game plan?
Yes.
Thanks, thanks for being patient with us, appreciate it. Okay.
It's terrible since March, they've been, it's crazy.
Why didn't we get them when we started meeting in August? So we started meeting in August.
The pile down there was like.
Yeah, maybe they weren't ready at that time.
Or would that be at the bottom?
Probably at the bottom. They were all throw up, there was nobody in there. Put it in the mail there.
Okay, we have another case this evening, which is case number 99-2-0-R. The petitioner is Ashley Stelmack. Where are you, Ashley?
I'm right here.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Come on up, and I see a handsome gentleman next to you. Who's this?
This is my husband, Jeff.
Jeff, hi, good evening.
Good evening.
A petition was filed seeking a special permit pursuant to sections 2252, 21, and 5300 and the following sections of the Carver zoning bylaw for property located at 77B Wenham Road in Carver, assesses map 99-lot 2-0-R to operate a home occupation, this being a spa providing facials, waxing, makeup, spray tints, lash and brow tinting in a residential agricultural district. So we know on this one that we're looking for a special permit. And so I turn the meeting over to you, and you guys can describe what you have in mind. Ashley, why don't you go first?
Sure, so the space would be on my first floor of my house. I have off-road parking. I would just be seeing one client at a time. I guess that's really it.
Okay, what kind of house do you have?
It's a Cape.
And do you know the square footage?
It's about 1,700, just shy of 1,700.
So this would be a room on the first floor?
Correct.
Is this a dedicated room?
Yes.
You would be the only person employed?
Correct.
So you would be the only person working there?
Correct.
Do you have an idea of what your hours would be?
Um, probably I wouldn't operate any later than 8:00 PM and early as 9:00 AM.
And how many days a week?
I'd be flexible with my clients with what they need, so I'd do seven if they needed me to.
It would be within the purview of the board to set your hours?
Okay.
Where are you located on Wenham?
Uh, we're right on the corner of McFarland, almost on the Plymouth line.
Okay. So you're right on the.
Your driveway's out back, off of McFarland?
Correct.
So is your parking out back?
Yes.
There you go.
All off-road, Eric?
Yes.
How did we do this without Google Earth before?
Honest to God, huh? Well, it makes it easy. It answers a lot of the questions.
You said the parking is in the back of the house?
Yes.
Pass that down.
And one client at a time, roughly an hour or so in between?
Correct.
And in this particular, are you licensed?
Yes, I've been licensed for 13 years.
I'm sorry, was I looking at Google when you were asking the hours of operation?
Yes.
You are a licensed what?
Esthetician.
Um, do you have to, Eric, with the Board of Health, do they need to go through you?
Yeah.
For a.
Probably whatever the material.
Operating license or?
Yeah, the spray tan. They'll be coming down this.
You own all the equipment for this already?
I do. I owned a day spa before.
Oh, you did?
Yes.
Which one?
Uh, the next. It was up in Situate. We had to close because of COVID. The overhead was very high up there.
Okay.
Um, do you have any children at home right now?
Um, we, he has a daughter. She's with us part-time.
Okay.
Monday through Friday?
No. She actually lives in Mississippi with her mom.
No, I'm sorry.
No, 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 yeah.
Sorry. I was telling my whole life story. For that type of business, I'd probably do a Tuesday through Saturday.
And I'm sorry, what were the hours again?
Flexible, but we might set them.
What were you looking for, for hours about the?
Um, before, I always worked 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Last person being done around.
Seven.
To the last person booked around seven.
At seven, they're all by eight.
Correct.
And you own all the equipment, huh?
Yeah, that was the plus side of having to close. I got to keep it.
So how big, do you have a dedicated room that you're planning on? It probably needs to have the doors on each side, or?
So right now are, the entrances, they do go through my kitchen, and it's right off of my kitchen. Kind of it's down hallway, but um, uh, the room is.
I don't know the exact footage. It's from the front of the house to the back. It's, it was the master bedroom, and we repurposed it for this and moved our bedroom.
You said it was off the kitchen, Ashley?
Yes. So you walk into my kitchen down the hall, and it's right there.
Okay. And you said that you had owned or operated a spa before, just worked at one?
I owned one.
Okay. And that was where, did you say? Situate?
In Situate, yes.
Closed because of COVID?
Correct.
On crazy rent?
I had 10 employees.
Really?
Yeah, and the overhead up there was very high, so it was hard to sustain over the months of my industry being shut down.
Do you consider this a temporary break until you open up a commercial space?
I honestly can't answer that. I just, I guess I'm going to see where it goes. I think that would be a goal one day, but definitely not in the near, near future.
Will you be working?
You just had to work with 10 employees. That's not easy.
No, that's hence the solo.
Maybe that's why you'll step away for a little bit too.
You might find you like that, low-key.
Yeah.
Well, she doesn't like solo too much. Good for me.
Are you going to be looking to put a sign out front of your house, or is it going to be online advertising?
Uh, online advertising for sure. I wasn't sure exactly what the rules are. It, it being my home, I don't want it to be like a, hey, here we are. Um, I, so I wasn't sure like what the rules were for that, if it was a certain size or some.
There is a sign by law.
It can be three square feet, which is what, maybe 18 inches by 18 inches?
Okay.
A small shingle, nothing.
Yeah.
Can't light it up.
Yeah, okay.
Can't light it.
You can have him stand outside and hold the sign though.
Oh, perfect.
Spin an arrow.
I mean, it can't look like, it can't look like there is a, you know, a major business being operated there, even though Wenham Road is a very busy street.
Yeah.
You know, delivery of your product, um, I mean, I can't imagine that a can of wax takes a whole lot of space.
It does not.
It might for you though.
But, but you have a storage facility, or it's inside the house for everything. And there's not, from what I'm reading, you don't really have chemicals that you're using. It's, it's spray tan.
Yeah.
So there's nothing dangerous going into the septic system, right?
The spray tan is, it, it comes in its own tent in the room, so it doesn't go into a septic system at all.
But no hair, this isn't, this is all?
Oh, no, no hair.
An esthetician, okay.
Yeah.
I don't know if you've been practicing on him because.
He's been my guinea pig for a couple things.
You don't want to see my legs.
Not really. Take your word for it, though.
Does anyone else have any other questions?
Eyebrow tinting. That one confuses me, but okay. Guess you got to be a girl.
Or a woman.
Does any member of the public have any question or comment that they'd like to make to the board?
Just, I think she's answered.
Well, I think she's answered everything. We were concerned.
What's your first, what's your name?
I'm Anne Patenza. I'm on five McFarland.
You're, you're on what?
Five McFarland?
Yes.
Right around the corner.
Okay. And what would you like to say?
She's in the first house, she's on the next house, we're on third. We're just worried about traffic.
Okay.
School buses coming around the corner to us.
Sure.
Parking. The driveway is very, very small.
So it's a six-car driveway, and we only have two vehicles?
Yeah.
So with.
It is. It's two side bikes, all the way down.
With me driving by, it's.
Yeah. No, it's deceiving.
And then we were just concerned about the wells. You know, we're all on a third of an acre of lot.
Sure.
And if there was any septic problems, it would be, the next town maybe would be, the well would be right there.
Yeah, yeah. Nope, there's no chemicals going into, it's just water, just for rinsing products and things like that. Yeah.
Doesn't pour no water?
No. Nope, there's no chemicals in the water. Nope.
It's like spoiled, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Does that satisfy, those answers satisfy you?
I guess so, yeah. My son Victor is here too.
Victor.
Hi.
I think you might know Victor.
Hello, Victor.
Hello.
Long time, no see. Nice to see you again, though.
Anne's wearing the mask. I didn't recognize you. You know, I'm Peter's next door neighbor.
I know you are, yes. I'm her too.
Good golly. I hate these masks. Can't tell who that masked man is.
And with eyeglasses too.
Does anyone else have anything they'd like to say?
I, I, I think this is a great home business. We've done a couple of, not a spa that I can remember, but we've done a few home, you know, woman-based businesses, and given your special circumstances, and you already own the equipment, which is impressive, um, I think if we, if we discuss your hours and, you know, you're not stacking clients, you don't have a waiting room.
No, especially with COVID.
With COVID right now, you're going to have to, have to deal with that.
Yeah.
Um, you're going to have to go through the Board of Health for your licensing, um, and they'll check. I assume they check your credentials as far as your licensing and keeping those up to date.
Yeah.
This would be good, I think, for three years, if I.
Yes.
Three years, and then you have to renew, but renewing is not a problem, and we'll get to that point at some point.
Okay, great.
But I, if there's no objection from the neighborhood, perhaps invite them for an open house.
Absolutely.
Your, your sign has to be, you know, small, tasteful, and right on Wenham Road.
Yeah.
One car in the driveway at the time. Um, I have no problem.
One client car?
Yes.
Well, one client car, yeah.
I, I, I gotta say exactly what, what the Vice Chairman said. I think this is, in this day and age, anything you can do that cuts your overhead and tries to earn you a living, you have equipment sitting there doing nothing, it's not making you a dime. To go out and rent a commercial space is a huge investment with additional insurance. I'm sure that those requirements would be met, because you'd obviously worry about somebody slips and falls and stuff.
Of course.
Absolutely.
As long as you don't abuse, and the neighbors don't complain about it, we don't turn it into a wet spa, I don't see any trouble with that. It's a great idea. Well, all of a sudden, the hot tub goes in the kitchen and the. And the sauna goes in, you know, we've just got to be careful.
And I have to say, and I think it was you, Ms. Clark, that said that we like to support family-owned businesses, and I especially women-owned businesses, coming as I do from a family of extremely strong women, but I have no chance in my house, by the way, none. I'm happy to hear about this.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that.
So.
Make a motion, we close the hearing for case number 99-20R, 77B Wenham Road cover.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
That, uh, motion.
Make a motion, will you approve? You want to do it, Sharon? Because you have the wording right.
Um, you do the, you want to do the finding?
Yeah, I'm going to do the finding.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, Anne.
Sorry.
See you later, Victor.
See you later.
I'd like to hear a motion from the board, or a board member, that it may the board award a special permit as the benefits of the proposed use outweigh the detrimental impacts on the town and the neighborhood in view of the particular characteristics of the site and the proposal in relation to that site. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor for the board to make that finding?
All right.
Hi.
That's the magic language according to our bylaw. And now do I hear a motion to grant the special permit under the authority granted to this board under the Carver zoning bylaw, sections 2242, 5221, and 5300, and sections following, all more particularly described by you folks during the evidence-taking of this hearing tonight. Do I hear such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
To grant the special permit under those sections. Did we get a second?
I seconded it.
All in favor?
All right.
Your special permit is granted.
Thank you so much for your time.
So I'm going to write this up.
Conditions, conditions.
Oh, conditions, conditions. Do we have anybody who wants to?
Yeah, I'd like to see, um, she had something about Monday through Saturday, or Tuesday through Saturday. Tuesday through Saturday. Tell me the times again, 8, 9?
Nine to 8. Uh, well, nine to.
Nine to 7.
So it'll actually be 9 to 7, with the last person being out the door by 8.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, so operating hours is one condition?
Uh, we're identifying Ashley as the only employee.
Yes.
Yeah. One client car at a time in the driveway.
And you'll, you'll make a conforming sign, 18 inches by 18, three square feet, whichever way you want.
I mean, she doesn't have to.
She doesn't have to.
But it's going to be a conforming sign.
Go take her.
Anything bigger than your bathroom front of us.
Okay.
You want to do that?
So I've got operating hours from 9 to 8, last person out at 8, one client at a time, and you're the only employee of this business.
Correct.
And it's occupying the, the room you identified?
Correct.
Dedicated room off the kitchen.
Yeah, I'd like to include in the language that, that exactly the wording that, that Ashley used, facials, makeup, waxing, spray tans, lash, and brow tinting. I'd like to get away from the word spa as it might be, a steam room, massage.
Okay. Good idea.
Do you know what I mean? So, do you have a problem with that?
None at all.
That exact wording?
Yeah.
Good idea.
That's off-street parking, correct for the park.
Off-street.
Yeah, yeah, one car at a time. We're okay with that.
That's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Well, conditions, that this business is limited to providing facials, waxing, makeup, spray tans, lash, and brow tinting, number one. Number two, that the operating hours are 9:00 AM, last person out the door at 8:00 PM, Tuesday through Saturday. One employee, you, and one client at a time, parking to be off-street, and a dedicated room for your business operations, which is to be off the kitchen, no waiting room. Everybody good with that?
I'm good.
Did I leave out anything?
Permitting, on condition on permitting from Board of Health.
Board of Health, subject to permitting.
Subject to, right.
Can I ask, how do we do that process?
Right down, see Kevin, he's usually in there, I think, what's he, 9 to 2?
Kevin Forge.
Okay.
Okay.
So subject to permitting by the Board of Health.
Because the Board of Health will have to give you the okay for the, for the services you want to provide.
Gotcha.
You need to provide the license, your licensing.
Yeah.
I'm not even sure if they're going to, they might even require some kind of insurance certificate.
Okay.
Just to make sure that, that they'll see it as the public is protected. I'm not sure you know more than that, Ben.
I don't think they'll require any insurance. That's, she's running it out of her home, is it right? So, it's her insurance company.
Okay. All in favor of those conditions?
All right.
Do we make a motion and second on the?
We moved, we, we had a move in second, and then we added the conditions.
Okay.
Yeah, subject to.
Subject to the Board of Health permitting. And so that's just passed unanimously, these conditions. So we passed unanimously the finding of this board, the grant of the special permit, and also the conditions. We're done, and so are you.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you guys.
Just, just one, my little spiel at the end.
Yeah.
We'll write up the decision the next few days. It'll be filed with the town clerk, where you, you know, where the town clerk's office is. We'll file it. All your neighbors will get a copy of it again. That, that's an appeal period of 20 days. That'll give you time to go down to the Board of Health. And at one point, you'll be called, within 20 days later, you'll be called by the town clerk. If you're not called, please call her.
Okay.
Um, from the time we file it. She'll give you an original copy, which you're supposed to file at the Registry of Deeds, which is not open right now. Um, you can file things there. But once it's, um, once you've been given the certified copy out of, or the copy out of the town clerk's office, you're good to go. You have to kind of technically clear the, um, appeal period, but I don't see a problem with it.
Okay, great.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Germaine will be coming to have some eyebrow tint.
Yes, actually, I'm looking to have some hair tinting.
Oh, perfect.
What's that?
We still send reminders when it comes up, what?
Who knows?
Put it in your tickle calendar, three years, six months, like two and a half years, check back.
Perfect, okay.
That way you don't have to do the whole notice and everything. You just go back in for a renewal.
Okay. Awesome. All right.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
See the best.
Okay, correspondence. I alluded to the fact that we had received a late email on the first case asking for withdrawal. That's in the file. We had also received correspondence in connection with the same case, indicating opposition to the project. That case is 1-108R. So both of those emails are in the file, and of course, we received numerous submissions, And of course, we received numerous submissions, including one late today on the case 9-0-R, the 12 Pondway Realty Trust case. Those are the only correspondences that I know that we've received.
Excellent.
Other than, of course, all those other memos and exhibits attached to the first batch of documents sent over on that 12 Pondview case. So I have nothing further to add with regard to correspondence. Does anybody have any?
Motion to adjourn.
Do we have anything else to discuss? Everybody clear on when we next need to be meeting?
So are we going to be keeping this, so the, the meetings are the 17th, the 19th, but are we keeping the usual last Tuesday of the month and the 24th?
No, that's the 19th.
No, that's the 19th.
I have.
Yeah, that's Thanksgiving week, so.
We got the 17th for the dedicated meeting, the 19th for our regular meeting, and others, at least one case in the queue there. And then we have our site walk on the.
7th.
7th.
Right.
So we have a lot of work ahead of us, which we do gladly because we're so well-paid.
And dedicated, plus you've got dedicated.
Yes. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I already did that.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Good evening, Carver. Thank you.